Call the meeting to order. Thank you for joining us. Roll call, please.
Sure. Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Black? Councilmember Derringer Zapson, Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Here.
Mayor Mersch?
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See, item number four. I see Captain Guerrero is with us. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself, Captain Guerrero, and tell us a little about yourself as our new captain at Lomita Station? Welcome.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for having me. It's been a few months, so I haven't, I think this is the only contract city that I haven't met, so thank you for having me today. Today's obviously a special day. It's my daughter's birthday, so. Yeah. We're gonna celebrate it later, later on the weekend, so.
You could have brought her here.
I'm like, today's my day, so she understands. She has tons of homework, anyway, but I appreciate you guys having me here. It's been a pleasure working with Karina. Since I've been here, she's been a huge asset for you guys as far as everything that's been going on in in this area. I know it's been a concern, the residential burglaries, so we're doing what we can with the burglaries, and we're working on it every day, so my team's working on it, my DB team, so rest assured, we'll get those numbers down, but just to tell you a little bit about myself, I've been on for 26 years. Patrol has been my number one love. I've, gosh, I've done probably 20 years in patrol. I love being out on the streets. I love taking people to jail, so.
So that they can be let go.
I'm very proactive, even as a captain, I plan to be proactive, and coming to meet you guys as much as I can and giving you updates as far as your residences here, community meetings, community events, I'm very huge on it. I will be in attendance as much as I can. Of course, I am divided up into four cities, so to say, unincorporated areas, so I try my best to make it everywhere that I can to accommodate everybody and their needs, so, like I said, I'm very excited to work with the men and women of Lomita Station and to work with all the council members here at Rolling Hills, so if you have any questions, if you have any concerns, please, that's what I'm here for. Don't be shy.
Anything else? Well, no? Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we, and we've gotten a lot of support. We do have a lot of community meetings. We have a very active block captain organization. Your core deputies have been very good about supporting the block captain program. They come to our neighborhood meetings and our block captain meetings. They've been very good, and so that I'm sure will continue, but we've had very good community support in that, in that area, and I'm seeing more black and whites in the, you know, ju- just driving through. When they can just drive through the city, you know, just to have a presence. I've noticed more of them in the last couple of months.
I encourage it, so it's part, it's part of our contract, so you deserve that.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Sure.
So, you're probably aware that we have, you talk about traffic enforcement, we have some issues, primarily speeding on some of the through streets, Crest Road primarily, so I serve as
President.
No, not president. Chair of the Traffic Commission.
Okay.
And we meet every other month. Usually, one of your deputies is here to give us a report on enforcement, and we appreciate that very much. We also pay additional for
Supplemental, yes.
Right, supplemental, so, you know, that's, that's pretty important to us, and we've expressed to the deputies, our primary concern is the speeding. They write stop sign tickets as well, but that's frankly less of a concern as the speeding. Portuguese Bend and Crest are the two main streets. There's, you know, there's speeding on others, but if we could control one of those two streets, that would be, that would be much appreciated by particularly the residents that live on those streets, but the community in general. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, you're aware of that.
You just email me or email me what the streets or guys' concerns. I'll be sure to let our, here's the thing, though, that you guys have to understand, is our traffic investigator, we only have one. And that's on day shift and PM shift, so if you can imagine that one has to go from all, I mean, we're talking Rolling Hills, Rolling Hills Estates, RPV, so it's a little bit tough, but so far, you guys have been the only ones that have actually expressed concerns of speeding on Crest Road and Portuguese Bend, so I have absolutely no problem to have them go out there and patrol, and like you said, the supplemental overtime is huge, and they're out there giving sites and out there with the light on radar equipment, so.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, and have a wonderful term of service here. I hope you love it there. We're happy to have you. Thank you. Yes.
Look at 7:06.
None of us wanted.
And I would also like to make another announcement or another introduction. We have Abby Sadios, who is a new employee with us. Abby, would you like to come on up and say hi and tell us how happy you are here?
Well, thank you for the introduction. My name's Abby. I think I've met most of you, but for those of you I haven't, it's nice to meet you. I'm a recent graduate from Northeastern, and I'm really interested in learning about local government. I've been here for about three to four weeks, I think, now, and it's really been a pleasure working with Karina, John, and Christian, and the rest of the team. But, yeah, thank you for having me. Thanks for the introduction, and I'm really looking forward to working with you all.
Great. Thank you. We're happy to have you.
Graduate from where?
From Northeastern. It's in Boston.
And you're still, you're working, aren't you, still on other, did I understand that you are taking, are you still taking classes for another, like another degree?
Right now, no.
Oh, okay.
But I'm thinking about graduate school, maybe a master's degree law school, we'll see.
We're very, we're very happy, and you've put a smi-, you've put a smile on Karina's face, which puts a smile on all of our faces, so thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. I studied environmental studies and poli sci.
Poli sci and environmental studies?
Yeah.
We hope you're happy here, and thank you so much.
I am, thank you.
All righty. Okay, item number five. Approve the order of the agenda. Anybody have any?
A second.
Favor?
Hi.
Okay, so move, blue folder items for supplemental?
You have two blue folder items tonight. One is a public comment submitted by Mr. Visco, and another is for item 10A, which was included in your packets, but after the agenda had posted and printed. So we just need a motion to receive and file of those. Make motion, receive and file?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moved. Okay. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Hi, Sean.
Good evening. I know I'm agendized under a contract renewal, but I have just a statement for the landscape that I'd like to speak of before.
On a different subject.
On a different subject.
Sure, please.
So, it's been a year, and I know you have it in front of you, renewal. We have a new maintenance supervisor that we'll be introducing to Christian that's coming up. We would like to implement the landscape plan that was developed last year, and I know that's, that's a very step-by-step process that we're working on, but I know it's, it's on my radar. When it is on your radar, let us know. We'd like to engage you and talk about it more, and I think you've been saving water for the last month. We've been turning, we turned the irrigation off, so there should be a dramatic change there in costs, and that's part of our routine that we do, but just so you know, we were able to take, get the benefit of growing the seed with rainwater, so that's and when we have the next meeting, I'll be able to introduce our new supervisor to you. All right?
What'd you do with your other supervisor that you had?
He was with us for 30 years.
And you let him retire?
Yeah.
Well, that's good, all right. Thank you, Sean. Happy New Year.
Well, thank you. Have a good evening.
Don't go away. No, I mean, before the item. Okay, any other public comment on non-agenda items? Mr. Visco?
Alfred Visco, 15 Central Road. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I thought I'd start the New Year off on a bang, so you have it in writing, but I'll go ahead and address it. First, the 2020 Rolling Hills Community Wildfire Protection Plan, set forth as one of its goals, the requirement that all structures have a Class A roof by 2013. So far, nothing has been done to achieve this goal that I'm aware of. And said CWPP also set forth a goal to create a list identifying highly flammable plants and request that the governing bodies prohibit planting of these plants and create a plan for eradication or removal of such plants within the community. Also, create a list of desirable plants as an alternative for planting. Create or obtain funding for an incentive program for removal of such plants. The first part of this goal was addressed in part in that the city passed an ordinance prohibiting the planting of all the highly flammable plants identified in the LA County Fire Department's already set go for sure. Nothing else has been done to achieve the remainder of this goal, again, to my knowledge. Third item is, for quite some time, it has been highly recommended that seismic natural gas shut-off valves be installed on all residential and commercial properties. It is my understanding that some jurisdictions mandate such install installations. Specifically, LA City, I believe, indicates that when a property is sold, that these devices be installed. There may be other cities that, and areas that handle it differently. Fourth is my understanding that the Fire Department does not give to the city copies of those annual fire code compliance inspections reports which cite parcels for non-compliance. Fifth is also my understanding that there are no follow-up inspections by the Fire Department to confirm that those parcels that have a fuel modification plan pursuant to LA County Fire Code Section 4906 at SEC are staying in compliance with their plans, and that the Fire Department personnel that are doing its annual fire code compliance inspections do not even have a copy of these plans. My understanding, the city is not actively inspecting parcels for compliance with its municipal code section 830 at SEC, but has reverted to a complaint-driven inspection protocol. Seven, last year came to my and others' attention that there exists a Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation, which is a charitable 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It is my further understanding that donations to same can be earmarked for equipment to our local fire station or to address other local fire abatement issues. Eight, what is the status of the creation of a 501(c)(3) foundation, a firewise community, and/or a fire safe council for Rolling Hills? And ninth, finally, what is the status of reduction of the fire fuel in Rolling Hills gullies? I would ask that staff be given appropriate directions concerning these items and that they then be put on the agenda in the near future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we will see that staff has given, it's been given, and you will be, there will be feedback on all of them. Any other? Okay, hearing none. Like to move to consent calendar. E, like Edward?
Yes.
Republic, okay. Any other polls? Okay. Councilmember Black, would, would you want? Okay, so we're going to approve all the items except 8E, which is polled. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on 8E, notes here. All right, so we, before we move the set, oh, the consent calendar, I'm supposed to ask for public comment on hold, right?
Yeah, so this would be the time, if you want to have a public comment on E.
What has been polled is Republic Services Report. Hearing none. Okay, I'm sorry, I got that out of sequence. All right, shall we do the item?
Yeah, well, so I had a question on some of these parts, and I'm sure that they go back. Some of them, this looks like a report that goes back to the beginning of last year, is that, or?
It's a, it's a report in aggregate that we started keeping in, mostly in the summer. You'll see a few that, that may be before that, but when we were having issues with Republic and the calls were really ramping up, I just asked staff to start keeping track so that we had an idea, because clearly, there's a differentiation between the complaints that go into the 1-800 number for Republic versus residents who call here, and so that's why we created the, the separate spreadsheet. And then you subsequently, in October, I believe, asked that we just start including it as part of it. This'll now change, and it'll, I'll just start it from January 1, you know, as we go through, you know, this, this upcoming year.
Well, there's the last two pages, two and maybe part of the last three pages, there's a lot of dates missing, so I'm not sure what to, what to make out of that. I don't know if it's recent, or these go back to last summer.
Yeah, so our administrative assistant didn't add the dates in. I'm not sure if they were just not written properly, but I think what you can do is you could look at the resolved date, and then, and then just use that as a guidepost. Typically, most of the issues are resolved day of or within the next day or two. There was only a handful of instances where they were down, I think, one or two scooters for mechanical issues and/or mother truck issues, and some people being out where there was one week that we had a prolonged issue that was then finally resolved, but other than that, typically, they're resolved same day or within a couple of days.
So I didn't realize there was another call with a date, a resolved issue, until I asked the first question, so there is a tremendous amount of complaints for the month of December. I, some of these are, there's a complaint, there's a resolution, a missed pickup, or something like that. I'm, I mean, as, as important as that is, you know, I also want to look at the, the ongoing problems with them, too, so I know we're going to be meeting with Republic, I'm not sure when.
The 12th, which is Friday?
Okay, yeah.
No, no, we're not meeting with Republic. This is a meeting with us to get ducks in a row for the next meeting with Republic.
Right. The, the Solid Waste Committee will be meeting. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more digging into the details of these complaints at that time.
Correct, and to your point, staff, as I mentioned, I think, last month, staff now has a standing meeting with the operations supervisor. Mayor Mersch attended our December standing meeting with him, and so
They asked me not to come back.
So, most of the issues, yes, you're right, in December, there was a good week and a half period where things went a bit haywire again, and now they've completely settled down, and I don't, you know, knock on wood, I think we've had maybe one or two calls in the past couple of weeks. So, but when stuff, when Republic has operational issues, like two scooters being down, or the mother truck breaking down, or people calling out, you know, that is where typically we'll see a flux rise and hopefully then dissipate once they've corrected it.
And I also had a couple of questions on the report itself. On page 21 of the binder, it's the report that's generated by Republic. I think we had, and I know they prepare this, not us, I don't know if we, we had asked this in the past, if they could show what our target is for the recycle, and if they can't be convinced to do that, to provide that for us, you know, if they could just have a little line down at the bottom and show what the target is, if they can't do that, could we just write it on there before these are Xeroxed for us? On page 22, this is also coming back, and we've asked you before, I'm still waiting for examples. We requested information on the definite, of some examples of what's non-franchise. Do we think that's manure? Just some examples of what they are, because there's quite a bit of tonnage, so it could be C and D, I don't know what it is, but if we could get that from them, and I don't know if that's something that Miguel can provide to us, or if that's, if you could let us know if that's something we need to interface with Devin and Dawn, that might be more of an administrative things.
Okay, and we did, we did make the request from last month, which I put in the background of the cover sheet, that the footnotes that you asked for last time, we weren't able to have for this meeting, so I'm hoping that for your next time you get a report, that we'll be able to have that information.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that was the ones that they were, okay, thank you, and then I was noticing I was matching up their reports for the month of November versus ours, excuse me, and I was wondering that they're much more in line than they used to be. They're starting to resemble each other more as far as the numbers and the locations, but if a resident calls us, and then we refer to Republic, are they adding all of those in there?
No, so, so this is what I was just explaining to Councilmember Wilson. The list you see here of customer complaints are complaints that go to the 1-800 number, and as you know, we had problems with the 1-800 number because it's a call center in Arizona, and a lot of the calls sometimes have to do with minutia within the contract that the call center is not even aware of, and so that's when we created that Rolling Hills
Right.
email.
Right.
We did, in our meeting last week with Miguel, talk about maybe creating a system now where when we send him a, a problem, that we send it to Lori Reyna, who monitors that Rolling Hills email, and we're going to try to see if there is a way to have her create a system where maybe it is included in their complaint list, so that way it matches ours. I, I don't have a, I can't guarantee that that's going to happen right away, but we are, we are trying to explore a way to see that there's more synchronicity.
Because their picture, if, if you're Republic's higher management, upper management, and you're looking at this, you're seeing a different situation than what the boots-on-the-ground are seeing. Okay, thank you. I have anything else? I have a motion to
Move to receive and file?
A second.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along. I keep pulling that wrong agenda. Sorry about that. Okay, item 10. This is the zoning case number 2102, to request a modification for previously approved project. Mainly around increasing the size of a retaining wall and a couple of other small things.
See, counsel, I'll give the presentation for this item. It is an item that went before the Planning Commission on, actually, more than one occasion. It was originally approved by them, and then it came back for modification about a month later when the applicant decided to put a basement in as part of the home, and so I'm waiting for my PowerPoint here to start up. Give me one second. Oh, it's working. 11 Flying Main Road, zoning case number 21-02. It's a second modification. The property is located on the south side of the city of Rolling Hills, as shown in, in that map here. You have Crest Road in this direction, and the subject property on Flying Main is actually off of Southfield. This is a vicinity map showing the closer the property. There's a thousand-foot radius, so everybody there was, sent a notice of the public hearing for the Planning Commission. We actually had three commissioners that lived in the vicinity of that thousand-foot radius, and so we two of them recuse themselves from participating in the evening meeting. One of them's outside at actually 500 feet, so that does not, you know, that wasn't a conflict of interest. He was able to participate. In terms of the background of the project, the property is zone RES1. There's a net lot area of under an acre. According to our code, we basically round that up to, to one acre. The Planning Commission gave approval for the original project back on June 21, 2022, and that was for the demolition of the existing 5,292 square foot residence and construction of a new 5,215 square foot residence. And then in August of 2022, we came back to the Planning Commission for a modification, and that was to construct the 1,428 square foot basement, staircase, and retaining wall. They also needed to adjust the grading numbers. And a little bit more of the background, so this was approved. It went through the building plan check stage. They were issued permits for demolition and grading in December of 2022, and in April of last year, Building Safety issued permits for building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, and septic. And in November, we had a construction meeting with the contractor, RHCA. We were able to walk the site and talk about what's needed during the construction phases. So the project is currently under construction. The applicant's request now is to increase retaining wall height by 18 inches. The reason why I needed to go back before the Planning Commission is because they approved it for five feet. A variance was required because it was relocated in the northeastern corner, in the side yard setback, requiring a variance, and so that 18 inches increases the height from five feet to two and a half, to six and a half feet, and it also increases the average height of the wall above two and a half feet. We also added the, some of the amenities in northwestern side yard. They were showing a barbecue, but that was sort of expanded to include a counter, sink, and refrigerator, and an outdoor shower. There is a service yard located in that area. That service yard was there before, when the previous residence was there, so it's basically grandfathered in, but we wanted to let the Planning Commission know that that will be used to also store utilities, such as a condenser, tankless water heater, and solar batteries. So the approval required a modification. It still required a site plan review and variance. There was, the new residence and structures were still being proposed. It was just the changes that were addressed or mentioned earlier. No changes were made to the grading. The retaining wall height was increased again by 18 inches, up to six and a half feet maximum, with an average grade of more than two and a half feet, and there were some side yard amenities on the other side that were included in the modification. This shows you the aerial of the property. This is a previous home on there, and I have another plan later on, which kind of shows that you have this part of the house that actually encroaches into the side yard, and part of the house over there also encroaches. The service yard in this area actually almost went up to the property line. It was about five feet away, and so in the new proposal, it's outside, it's actually set back further away from the, the property line. It's 10 feet, and I'll show you that in the, the upcoming. So this is the proposed site plan, showing the new residence, and this is the, I guess, the northeastern property line. They have a basin down below, a staircase leading down there, and in comparison to what's being proposed, this is the overlay of the previous residence, which you can see kind of projects further out into the side yard setback in that area. A little portion also projects out on the northwestern section. This doesn't show it, though, but the previous service yard actually extends out further to the property line, about in that area there, and so the new service yard will be further away from property line, 10 feet. They are proposing the basin down below. This is the, why it went back for the first modification. Right now, they're making some modifications to the staircase in that location. That's why it's bubbled in. They're actually putting in a wider door down below. This is a wall fence plan. The wall that's being extended is in this area here. It's going from five feet up to six and a half feet. That 18-inch increase is what required, what kind of triggered that modification, going back to the Planning Commission. I also wanted to mention that they are proposing pool fencing, which kind of goes around the property, down to the, below the swimming pool. It comes across, and then they're showing that three-rel fence going around the front. It comes across, and then they're showing that three-rel fence going around the front, the front of the property on Flying Main Road. This just shows the basin plan. They are making some modifications to the interior of the basement. Previously, there was a, I guess, a bedroom in that location. Now it's just really more of a recreation room. There's an indoor swimming pool down below, and they are widening out that doorway there. That's why it's kind of bubbled in, in that area. The top there shows a northeast elevation. This is along the RHCA easement trail that kind of goes below. And you can kind of see the, what they're showing with the staircase down, going down below, the stairwell, and some of the changes they're making there to include a wider door. On the other side, the bottom photo there, northwestern elevation, you have the garage on this side here. The street is on this side, so the driveway is in this location, leading up to the garage. That's the door leading to the garage. So you'll have a service yard located in this area there. And then behind the, the service yard, you'll have the swimming pool bath in this location. There'll be an outdoor shower, and your barbecue, barbecue area and other amenities will be located along this wall. It's another section of the proposed residence. This shows a side property line. The, the property line is, is right here. You have a 10-foot RHCA easement, 20-foot side yard setback, setback. The variance was approved for this area in that location, and then they are making some changes to the, the landing area. This is the northeast section. That's showing the 18-inch increase in that retaining wall. So that's, again, that's what triggered the, the modification. The purpose for that 18-inch increase is so that they can maintain the existing grade of the RHCA easement. They're also adding a stairwell. This was approved by RHCA, and it's included as a supplement in there. So they approved that back in October. And this shows the northwest side, where you have the service yard in that location. Within that service yard, you have that condenser, tankless water heater, electrical panel, water filtration system. They were showing a barbecue area there. They've sort of expanded that to include the refrigerator and the sink in that location along the wall, and the outdoor shower. Again, if you actually looked at the outline of the previous residence, it projected out further. And then when you included the service yard, the service yard actually was about five feet again from the, from the property line. So they are actually setting this back further outside the RHCA easement. In terms of the California Environmental Quality Act, we find that this project is categorically exempt, subject to Section 15303, Class 3. It's construction of new single-family residence, accessory structures. And to summarize, the Planning Commission's meeting on December 19th, we had a field trip that morning. We actually didn't have a quorum on this item, again, because two commissioners lived within that 500 feet. The attendees at that meeting were able to get familiar with the project. And, you know, we provided a presentation on what was being proposed, what was being modified. There was no public opposition at that meeting. The neighbor at 12 Flying Main was in attendance in there, but didn't have any oppositions to the, to the project. The commission made no decision at the field trip. That meeting, in the evening, we had a meeting with the Planning Commission in this room. We did have a quorum that night. There was no public opposition. We made the presentations, and at the conclusion of that meeting, the Planning Commission approved the modification. And that's why we're here before you tonight. Our recommendation is that the City Council receive and file the Planning Commission's action to approve the modification, and we're available for any questions.
Yes.
John, did I understand in your presentation that the, not more considering tonight, but the, overall, the plans aren't, aren't complete? You said, I got the impression that there was still some planning, some changes that were going to be made.
Well, the plans have to go back before plan check for that modification, the 18 inches.
I'm talking about, you said they were going to enlarge the door, and there was a couple of other things that you referenced that were changes that didn't sound like they were part of the current plans.
Yeah, so the original plan was approved by, by Building and Safety. They were issued permits. They're, they're actually out there now, they're constructing. The foundation is basically, is done. They're working on the rest of the, the project. But they do, do need the approval for that 18 inches, the modification to the wall, to extend it taller. And that does have, have to go before building plan check in order to be reviewed.
If we approve this tonight, does it have to come back to staff or the Planning Commission?
No. They're waiting for us to really stamp the plans, and so they can reset that over at Building and Safety.
Any other questions of John? Before, before I open it up to the public, I just would like to note that I was at the site visit and the Planning Commission meeting. So I would like to open it up if anybody, I see our, the applicants are here. If anybody would like to make a comment? Close the public comment.
I'd make a motion to receive and file.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson, Councilmember Black, Council, Mayor Pro Tem Piper.
Yep.
Mayor Mersch.
Yes. Thank you very much. Okay. We have no public hearings. Old business, we have none. New business, item 13A. This is the proposed fiscal year budget calendar. Who's going to be presenting on this?
Sure.
How about it?
Again, mayor and council members, staff decided to put the budget calendar on new business as opposed to consent calendar. That way you could look at it, make sure that there was nothing that stood out, I think, from a negative perspective. And mostly also, the Finance Budget Audit Committee has two meetings scheduled in here. And we want to make sure that the calendar matches with your calendars before we move forward with any approvals. But basically, you'll see, it's a little bit more of a simplified calendar than last year. Last year, we added in a variety of additional meetings because we did have a projected budget deficit. This year, we're not anticipating that. So I think it's a little bit more streamlined, and the city manager had requested that we change the, the layout of it to make it as clear as possible for which meetings affect the council, which meetings affect the committee, and which, which aspects on this calendar affect staff specifically. With that said, if there's any questions, happy answer.
You have any questions for staff? I'd like to make a comment. I like the little budget calendar matrix thing. I found that helpful for me.
Actually, I do have one question. So it looks like May 13th is the only non-council meeting date. Is that correct?
That would be a budget, the workshop budget.
Right.
It's outside of.
It's going to be scheduled not on the city council meeting.
There's a city council meeting.
I'm sorry, what, 6th? It's the 6th.
Yeah, that's, that's me.
They, that is a committee meeting.
May meeting, yeah.
It looks like we're all good with that. Okay, any item, any comment from the public on this? Okay, hearing done. Close the public comment? Hello?
I'm going to approve the proposed budget calendar.
A second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Cast, thank you. And let's see, any, approve the city council meeting dates for calendar 2024, item 13B.
Good evening, once again. Every year in, at the first meeting, you are presented with your council meeting dates for the coming year. That's what we've done here. What you will notice, one difference between the past two years, at least that John and I have been here, we have two meeting days that fall on a holiday. Your past practice has been that when that happens, unless otherwise noted, those meetings in conflict with a holiday will be canceled. Ideally, I'd also like to come away tonight with us choosing the replacement meeting for the night of the holiday party and, and see if we can have that set in stone well in advance this year. My recommendation would be the following day, December 10th, but again, I will leave that up to you. So this is easily modifiable, but tonight would be the night ideally to do that, if feasible.
Any questions from staff, from anybody?
I do. So if we cancel Memorial Day and Veterans Day, we're not going to suggest an alternate meeting day in case we need one?
That would be at the discretion of the body to make that determination. That's why I pointed out, past practice has been that those in conflict with a holiday are canceled. So it's up to you.
Okay, well, we're going to, you're asking us to choose an alternate day for December 9th?
Correct, because, so i- in May and November, you still will have at least one meeting. But December, you would not, and we do need to do the rotation. So, which is the most important thing, I would say, at that December meeting.
Why don't we just stick it on the 10th? Because it's so far from now, no one knows. Yeah, fine, do it on the 10th, and we'll move it.
Okay.
And then could you? Is it possible to get? I still have my computer, it's still from Heidi with the, with the, all the dates. Did we send out, when you guys put it in your calendar, could you include me with all the dates for all these things?
Absolutely.
Because then I'm going to cancel Heidi out of my calendar.
Oh, interesting.
We don't have that calendar, but I will also see with IT if there is a way to have that.
I hit the cancel button, but it's been there for, I don't know how long I've been doing this.
Okay.
Along my sentence has been.
Any gray hair when you did it?
I know, it's been a long time.
She doesn't even know why it is.
No, actually, I, I, when I was at, I'm like, wow, that was quite some time ago.
No other questions? Look, let's save the actually changing the date until after. Any public comment on this item? Now we can hand-scratch over this. So the 10th for, for the December?
Yep.
Is that okay? Okay, and I'm going to be the buzzkill again. Call me the buzzkill lady, the buzzkill lady. You can take your choice of, on these days when we don't have, where the, if we don't have a meeting, even though we have another meeting in that month. Karina is working very hard on trying to space out our work and our calendar items, our agenda items, so that we don't get really long meetings. If you don't have a meeting, you're going to have one, one meeting where you're not going to be very happy because it's going to be long.
The main of the meetings is due to the talking, quite honestly, not to the agenda items?
So, I understand. That being said, I would recommend that we set an alternate date for both the memorial and the Veterans Day that we're missing.
Madam Mayor, I, I will say, in, in the event where there may be a lot of, we can still call a special council meeting.
If needed.
If needed.
Well, I, I would support your recommendation, but I don't think it's going to happen.
Let's vote.
Oh, Madam Mayor. Two to two, so that, so that means it's not going to have it. So I, I will go, I will make, being the nag that I am, I'm going to make myself a little note. So on, in April, when we're looking at what our calendar is going to be like for the agenda. All right, so. Get some, something like that, just normal buzzkill for me. So approve is presented. Do I have a motion for that, please?
Wait, with the December 10th?
With December 10th.
I'm sorry, with the, with the December 10th.
I mean, because if you're going to do it for 45 minutes to an hour, I can totally suffer through an hour for doing both meetings at one time.
Okay, and so that was matters from staff. I do believe, do we have anything from council?
No, yeah, yeah, sorry.
We didn't hear the vote yet.
We, we need to take a vote.
There's a motion and a second.
Motion and a second.
I'm so sorry.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, matters from the City Council?
You know what, I'd ask that we agendize Fernando.
Yes. On the next calendar. We're trying to keep it balanced, so. Any other from City Council? Matters from staff?
I have just one thing, just a point of order for you all. You should have gotten an email from the FPPC about your filings for this year. So I will send out a reminder to you, but, and I will make sure I have something for you and Paper. But, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Piper, for already doing yours. So, so.
This is the Form 700, not, not your AB 1234.
This is your Form 700, and then I will also take a look at your AB 1234 compliance. And I believe some people are coming up, actually, I believe all of you are coming up this year in the two-year rotation for doing that.
Can't do it online anymore.
It is, it is an ethics training, and I believe, I just got an email from the JPIA that there is an online version that you can do.
And do we still get paid 800 grand to do that?
But not, but it's but it's not, it will be online through them, not, not on the FPPC website like it used to be.
So for your FPPC filing, you can do it online, and I will send that, that link again. That's how Mayor Pro Tem Piper did his.
But for the AB 1234?
For the AB 1234, you can also do that online, and I will get that link from the JPIA if, if that.
But not through the way we used to get it?
Also, if, if we wanted, I know BBK does offer in-person training to be able to do that as well, and I believe it is a two-hour commitment of time.
Would you get charged for that? Would you get charged?
You would get charged for that. The, the online one through JPIA, I believe, is, is free of charge.
It's free.
And usually, from my own past experience, you can move through it rather quickly.
There's a timer thing on it, you have to go slow.
It kind of does, but you can kind of.
I know how to do it.
And just for the public, this is all of our stuff that we have to take every
Compliance.
so often, comply to our ethics. Not that I'm, you, you can still be a buzzkill, but you have to be ethical. Okay, any, anything else? Okay, hearing nothing. Jim, I'm going to agenda, close the meeting. Thank you very much.
Forty-seven.
You were the, you were the longest person.